How's everyone doing? We are still waiting for a quorum, so that's why we're not started yet.
No problem. I think it's. I got 6:59 over here.
Okay.
Dot. I am, um, thank you for giving me the, the opportunity. I, um, I'm dog sitting to, for, for two, for, for a friend with, I have two new clients, my two new dogs. And they are rambunctious. So, so if I'm on mute, that's why, um, but hopefully they had a good.
Several of us have dogs, so we.
Yes, okay, okay.
And, and I'm extremely grateful to you because you're here. And because every time I say, can we do this? You're like, yes, we can do that.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Let's see, we have.
I'm gonna have to rethink the office on the second floor. It's really warm up here.
Hmm, yeah.
And it's the first day that it really started to feel like spring. So I, I feel that, yeah.
I feel a little guilty if I turn the air conditioner on today.
We're just gonna give it till like 7:05. We do have a quorum, but I'd like to give the other two commissioners a few more minutes to join us.
Are you all gonna stick with virtual sessions and, and meetings?
So for now, um, I really don't want to move back to just one. I want us to be able to blend the meetings. So that, because you know, this has made it accessible for more people.
Mm hmm. I like that idea.
We're in the process of figuring that out.
Yeah, it, it's almost more complicated to figure out the tech to make in-person and virtual both good, right? It's hard to do them both well at the same time.
Kyle's nodding because he's in charge of figuring it out. I say we, but I mean Kyle.
Yeah, I know.
Do you guys have them blended yet?
I'm trying to think of some of the, I mean, I haven't really been to any successful hybrid meetings. Only the ones where, you know, you're in a, like a, a council room with a dais with the microphone that's already linked to the recording. Going to the local television channel, something like that. Um, and I can't even think where that even, I mean, count like county planning board, I think, has something like that, but.
Right.
So unless they were like gonna let other people use the space, I think it takes a while to like get that tech working.
Yeah. Yeah, I think like our committee meetings, like I've told them to have a dial in number or pop on a Zoom because that's a little more casual, but for these it needs to be a little more professional looking.
Mm hmm.
Okay, guys, I have 7:05. Um, and we do have a quorum. Commissioner Colbert, if you can turn on your camera so we have an on camera quorum. Then we can start. I have texted the other folks to find out, but let's try and get started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:05. John, can you do a roll call for me?
Yes. President Franklin?
Here.
Commissioner Colbert?
Here.
Commissioner Duckett?
Here.
Commissioner Hantet?
So here.
Commissioner Law? Town Administrator Kyle Snyder?
Here.
Police Chief David Burce?
Here.
Public Works Superintendent Darnell Bond?
Here.
Town Clerk John Hudson here.
Hi. Um, do I have consent to the agenda we have for the evening?
Yes, I consent or I move to consent to the agenda.
Okay.
I consent as well.
Okay, then we can move on to my closed session summary from Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. So a room can just bear with me while I read the boring stuff. It was a closed session on April 5th, 2022. It, the session closed at 7:22 and was a virtual. It was closed under annotated code general provisions, Article 3-305B7 to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice and 8 to consult with staff consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The vote to go into closed session, the motion was made by myself, seconded by Commissioner Duckett and all commissioners voted to go into session, all five of us, and was unanimous. Everyone was in attendance. So Sarah Franklin, Jenna Stuckett, Charles Colbert, Thomas Kinta and Karen Law. No actions were taken and we were discussing legal implications regarding annexation referendum verification. The session was adjourned at 8:35. Now that that's in the record, we can move on to our business. And welcome to our town, Megan Baco, who is the Director of Maryland Milestones. Did I get that right? Um, okay, which there with the Anacostia Heritage Area. So I think they're the same name or same thing, different, two different names. And she, they have been working with us very like just amazingly on the civil rights trail for Prince George's County. So they're going to talk to us a little bit about that. And we have three signs coming soon. And we are in discussions about some other sites. So I'm gonna turn it over to Megan and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. So Mayor Franklin, uh, as she said, my name is Megan Baco. Um, I am the Executive Director of Anacostia Trails Heritage Area. And one of our branding names is Maryland Milestones, which we get the confusion all the time, but you, it, it's confusing to everyone and we know that. And, um, I really appreciate being able to, uh, to speak you, to you all tonight. And then also the fact that this is recorded because some really interesting heritage tourism efforts that will begin to include Upper Marlboro in a, in a much more impactful way. So when the organization I work for was founded, it started in the late 1990s when most, when a lot of the towns and communities around Route One in Prince George's County came together and wanted to take advantage of a new program at the time at the state level called the Maryland Heritage Area's Authority. And since 1997, there are now 13 heritage areas across the state. So if you travel over to Western Maryland, you can see the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area or even further, uh, the Deep Creek Experience. Uh, and the great work that they do, uh, in Western Maryland or Annapolis and the Chesapeake Crossroads Heritage Area. So basically there's one of me in a lot of the historic regions of the state. And what that allows towns who are within our boundary to participate in is, uh, thank you to uh, have access to grant funds, uh, both through, um, our organization at the county level and then also at the state level. So our grants only go up to $5,000, but at the state level, it's up to $100,000 for capital projects and that can be for renovating buildings. It can be for parks and trails. Uh, our funds usually, um, go to really, uh, small innovative projects, even a single event um, or a new exhibit, things like that. So, uh, we really try to be liaisons in the community and make sure anything related to cultural tourism, historic preservation, public history, um, trails. Uh, the mandate of the organization is, um, you know, to preserve and promote art, history, culture and nature. And I say, what else is there? So all the good things that we love about the places that we live and we visit and we advocate for. Um, and you can see in the map how our current heritage area, uh, the dark shaded area is, is really about less than a quarter of, um, all of Prince George's County. And so over time, we've, um, you know, really had to say, oh, we, we can't work on this project because it has to be in the boundary. And over time, there's just been so much, um, uh, interest and, uh, attention and effort to see if we can expand our boundary. It seems simple to say, okay, well, our service area will expand, but in fact it goes through a state process. Uh, and it has to be connected through what we call, um, uh, interpretive themes. So we can't just add the whole county. We have to follow, uh, a management plan and interpretive plan. And those have to be, uh, approved at the state level. So that's where we're actually going through the process right now. And you can see in the blue, um, clusters, we're hoping to add quite a bit of, uh, new partners, new sites and to really be able to impact, uh, across the county. So that work started in earnest in 2019. Uh, we had a report come out in 2020 and one forthcoming later this month, which I'll be sure to share and was able to, um, uh, talk to the, uh, previous mayor and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and then also, um, some, your county historian and the commission about a lot of the history about, um, Upper Marlboro. Whoever's in charge of the slides can go to the next one for me. Okay, so, uh, we were able to, through the process of uh, this report that the state funded, we were able to send some consultants and the staff before I got to the organization to really take a look at the cultural tourism assets around Upper Marlboro. So you'll know some of these, um, some of them are, you know, Darnell's Chance, some of them, the, the lake and some of them are places that you might, you know, immediately recognize. And then some of them may be like, um, you know, might not be the main attraction, but we want to start to connect those both through trails and through storytelling. So that would really be the goal, um, that we have uh, across the county, but also in Upper Marlboro. Um, go to the next slide. Okay. And this is just a little bit more information about the services that, um, Athr provides and how it connects to MHA, Maryland Heritage Area's Authority. There's also Maryland Historical Trust Grants, Preservation Maryland Grants. Um, and I have a background in planning and preservation. And so I'm always happy to, to hear a potential project that might save a place, um, or reinvigorate a place or anything like that. So please, uh, keep me in mind for that. And actually, even before we expanded the boundary to officially include Upper Marlboro, we're working on including, um, uh, at least two, hopefully three civil rights trail signs um, to Upper Marlboro. And that is a project that's actually funded by the National Park Service Civil Rights African American Civil Rights Grant Program with, um, funding support from the Maryland Heritage Area's Authority. And the reason we were able to bring it to Upper Marlboro, even though it is outside of our boundary is because we have, um, outside funding, not just state funding. So we're able to, to stretch our boundary a little bit. Uh, still all above board and it, and it connects, um, really, you know, history that I think the more recent history becomes the more difficult it becomes to interpret. I mean, no history is easy to interpret actually. So, um, if you want to go to the next slide, the three locations that, uh, we're discussing for civil rights trail signs in Upper Marlboro are, uh, right outside the county courthouse and talking about the, um, um, racially charged remarks, um, from Judge Bowie at the time, uh, about a court case there. And then, uh, I, I think it's the, um, the county's NAACP then held a rally there to, to protest those statements and bring attention to, um, the racism of those statements. So we're hopefully going to be putting a sign right across from the county courthouse. So when you're standing at the library space, um, you can see directly where these protests happen. And the other location we're looking at is in the, um, I don't know, the, the grassy area.
Yeah, we call it a pocket park.
The pocket park, the grassy, grassy area across from the locksmith. And the locksmith shop was, um, a filming location of Black Like Me. And Black Like Me was written by John Howard Griffin and then turned into a movie. It's set in New Orleans, but, and I haven't done quite enough research yet to find out how they found Upper Marlboro and were able to film there. So I think that's a very interesting cultural connection. And I think people remember seeing this book uh, either in your school library or, and there's, it's not, it's not perfect. There's certainly controversy about this book. And so we'll include that in the sign as well. Um, and those signs will connect. It's really more of a thematic trail. It's really too far to walk because some of our other signs are in Laurel uh, related to the segregation and then integration of the Laurel Municipal Pool. The protests at Bowie State, um, related to, um, the students, um, basically protesting and closing down the school in protest of, um, poor conditions, poor, uh, lower teacher salary and how that related to how Bowie was a school that was supposed to be getting equal state support and wasn't. Um, we also have, um, some signs, um, related to housing segregation at the Bel-Air, Bel-Air Housing Development in Bowie. Um, and then we've got some, you know, I say fun, but some more, um, kind of showing even, you know, through, uh, overt racism, there was still a lot of excellence and joy that African Americans in Maryland were able to create and, and experience for themselves. And certainly, uh, at, in North Brentwood and the other towns that were from the very beginning, black founded and black led, uh, in North Brentwood, we have Sis' Tavern, which is a great example of, um, spaces being created, uh, because, uh, so one of the great stories is, you know, you've got uh, great jazz musicians work, um, going, playing at Howard Theater in DC and then, but they can't stay in DC. And so it actually created this, uh, opportunity and community in North Brentwood and at Sis' Tavern. There's some great performances there. And, um, also I'll end on a basketball one. Um, so the, used to be called the Cole Field House at UMD is now, now called the Jones Hill House. And that's because of some groundbreaking black athletes at UMD. And the sign also mentions that the first NCAA team with all black starters, uh, to win the championship was in 1966. So the trail is an, is a mix of, you know, we've got some cultural references, um, sports, music, um, but really discussing the civil rights era in, uh, Prince George's County. So there's the dog right on cue. But I'm almost done too. So, um, we've been working on the signs for several years. It's been difficult to do the research. And we're honing in on being able to put signs in the ground in May. And then I guess I'll, I'll, I'll end there, but also say that, um, we hope that the boundary expansion, so we can work even more closely together, will occur in, um, spring of 2023 be approved by the state. So it's a bit of a long process, but obviously we're already starting to work together and appreciate, um, all of your support of that expansion and, uh, working with you on this project.
And I just really appreciate your willingness to say yes. So I'm gonna ask the commissioners if they have any other questions. Um, and I will kind of preempt the question. We are discussing like further down, not with this phase, but discussing our pool that we filled in rather than segregated. And, um, possibly talking about the schools at, and their desegregation because we have some of those buildings in place. Now, like, guys have questions now?
Oh, yeah. And I'll, I'll just say, yeah, the, um, the trail that's currently funded, um, you know, really, uh, the funding that we have is really for the, the research and the context research. And so I do believe that moving forward, we should be able to add signs to the trail and that really be, um, a great, uh, a great thing for the trail. And there's also gonna be a compendium websites. We can also add things, uh, on the web, even if it's not a sign in the ground, which tends to take a little extra, take a little more time.
And I also would be remiss not to, uh, say thank you very, very much to Brian Caldega, who's done a ton of the research and worked very closely with Megan and Maryland Milestones to make these happen. So. Sorry, questions, guys?
I was just wondering how was, um, most of your research done? Where, what were your resources?
Right. So, um, we, at the beginning of the project, had a great relationship. Um, it still do, I didn't mean like that, um, with the, um, county's Black History Program. And they really led the, the beginning of the research phase and, and really relied on, um, some of their own knowledge and the basis that Black History Program and the researchers there have about, um, civil rights in Maryland and in Prince George's County. And then from there, we worked with them to create the list of sites. And, um, what's challenging about a sign project is you have to have both the story and the site. And so we all know that there are going to be a lot of stories that, um, and so, and this, the most, the simplest example is, you know, it's, you, maybe it's related to somebody's home, but you don't really want to put an interpretive sign in front of somebody's home. So part of it is balancing, where can where will you get a good, where is it safe and impactful and meaningful to place a sign? And then kind of have to, uh, marry those two things together. Um, and then we're working with, uh, along with Black History Project, um, a researcher named Nathan Denny's, who worked at the Baltimore Architecture, Architecture Foundation. And, um, just before, uh, we jumped on this Zoom, working with the towns themselves. So like Bowie has, uh, Historic Property Manager, who also has photographs, uh, getting photos from AP, Getty, Baltimore Historical, I mean, uh, Prince George's County Historical Society, Laurel Historical Society, um, places like that. And then a lot of it's also from newspapers. Oh, and I'll say one more, which is, um, we had a great convening of, um, but uh, residents of the Grove in Laurel, which is like the black, which is the black neighborhood and still is in, in Laurel. And they, uh, joined us on a Zoom and they talked us through, um, the years leading up to the integration of Laurel Pool. And, uh, that was really just a, a great conversation. So I'd like to see, you know, more, in that case, we were able to connect with people who remembered it happening. And so we really, that was really a great way to, to bring that to the sign.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? All right.
Not really a question, but I did want to say that this is, you know, this is awesome work that you guys are doing. Um, I think I had, uh, mentioned just a couple of, um, items to President Franklin that I think you guys have already started thinking about in terms of where, uh, next to put a marker or just some kind of, uh, historical points. I think, I think this is great work and, and, uh, Commissioner Hantet already stole my question and, and thinking of what, uh, how you guys are soliciting the researcher or, or finding new areas to, to, to mark. So this is, this is great stuff. Thanks for, thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, they made all your changes, Charles.
Oh.
And, and they're, they're, they're working with Frederick Douglass Alumni Association.
Okay, good. Well, uh, yeah, that, that meeting's coming up. I don't know if you're, wanna jump on that meeting too and, and, uh, uh, get started and think about that. Um, I, I always want to, I wanted to ask a question back if that's okay. I think you will have a Upper Marlboro kind of town. I think Brian gave it to me last time I, I was there in person. It's a, a walking tour and we shouldn't, you know, perhaps my organization can help update and make sure that new information is included in that, um, too. Because that would be a great next step. Make sure that that's available for people to pick up. So that could be a good way to bring these projects together.
That's an excellent idea.
Well, we'd be happy to provide our research. Well, we'd be happy to provide our research or, um, talk about ways to have that, you know, printed or, you know, distributed. So. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right. I'll stick around on mute, see if.
Okay. We're gonna talk about our events policy. It's gonna be exciting.
Oh, I thought it was gonna be about upcoming events. It's about event policy. I might have to go take the dogs for a walk.
We do have upcoming events. We can do that first.
Okay, okay.
There you go.
Thank you all.
Yep. All right, guys. I'm gonna move us on to the town events calendar and the events policy because they kind of go together. Um, the events policy is here on the screen and I did meet with our new events coordinator today and kind of go over some edits she recommended. And then, you know, we'll talk about it ourselves. But I will go over kind of the calendar. John, do you have the calendar on a slide? I'm not sure. Indifference to Megan and wanting to know what we're up to first. Um, so I don't think we had a poetry event on the ninth. I'm not sure. Uh, but that was, I think, a library event. But moving on, we've got, so we've got our May events focused on Marlboro Day. Um, I think the farmer's market has been canceled for May. And maybe it will happen in June or it might get pushed to July. Um, and then we'll do, for Memorial Day, we'll do a wreath laying. There is a, um, marker at the pond and bench at the pond. And there is also the town hall, it building itself is a World War II memorial, I think is correct. And, um, so we'll do wreath laying ceremony on the 25th. Um, and I, I think I have a time, so we'll get that out to everyone so we all can be there. And the family, um, of the gentleman, PFC Curtis, uh, whose marker is down at the pond from the Vietnam War, will be joining us for a reception to honor their family member. Uh, then we get into June, we have our movies night, it's possibly farmer's markets, the store committee has memories and morsels. Um, the arts committee has asked to have an event on June 26th. Um, but we aren't able to do an event on that day. Um, so we're gonna have to ask them to pick a different day and get that moved. Then we go into July with another movie night and farmer's markets, August movie night. National Night Out is done by a community organization in the area and it's usually held a little outside of town, but we partner with them, um, to do that usually over at the parking lot for the Amish market. Um, and then we should have more farmer's markets. And the, uh, fire department, our volunteer fire department puts on Cruisin' on Main. So that's something we kind of support them with, um, but they put that on. In September, we have another movie night, more farmer's markets and the 100 year celebration of the firehouse they've requested. They've done an event request. So that's in there as a placeholder, but they'll have to submit their requests to us. hundred-year celebration of the firehouse they've requested. They've done an event request. That's in there as a placeholder, but they'll have to submit their request to us. Um, then we did get the date of October first for the Crane Highway Memorial. Um, and I'm gonna be meeting next week with the highway administration about how we can close roads. We also have the National Faith in Blue, which is the Public Safety Department. Um, on the eighth, right now, we have the Happy Leaf Festival. Farmers markets may still be going in October and then the twenty-ninth will be our trunker tree, our annual trunk or treat event. Then we move to November and we'll just have probably a low-key veterans event if COVID allows. We haven't done anything the past few years because we do not want to put our veterans who may be in um sensitive populations in a situation where they might get sick. Um, so we've just put signs up, but hopefully this year we'll be able to feed them some breakfast or lunch and just appreciate them. And then in December, we have the third for our tree lighting. Commissioner Lot is also looking into the possibility of doing some other events, uh, but we'll hold those off until she's able to meet with people and get things a little more fleshed out. So that's where we're at with events. Um, and does anyone have any questions? All right. Um, so we'll move on to the policy. We'll just kind of back up there. And this policy comes out of a couple of issues. Um, the first is that there's always the question of when do we call this event for rain? And if we call it for rain, when is the rain day? And um
So.
Commissioner Lot, I think you're, you need to, sorry. Um, so the, that's the one thing. Then the other thing is that any event put on by us or put on by people in the town that aren't the town kind of reflects back on us. So if there's a safety issue because the event wasn't properly planned or it just kind of creates a lot of disruption or it doesn't pull off properly, like there's no bathrooms or something. People come to us and say, why didn't you do this event better? So we need to start making sure that all those Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And then the third issue is that we are a small town, so we have extremely limited staff. So we need to make sure that we don't have a, an event every weekend that our staff needs to be at. And then, then they're not able to get a good balance with work home life or we're having to, you know, so that they can have balance, we're having to put off the work of the town. So those are the reasons for the policy. Um, does anyone have any questions about it?
So wouldn't a rainy be generally be the next day? I mean, to, to, if we're renting, you know, porta potties and all that, you wouldn't want to do it a week later or anything like that.
Right, so with the, the movie nights are kind of the trigger for this process and decision. Partly and partly just kind of volunteer feedback over time. Um. So for those of you don't know, I started out with the town on the events committee. So like, we've kind of been through like all the different processes. And so the thing we run into, if we try to do the next day with a movie night is we're often showing kids movies and Sunday is a school night. So then you're gonna have less people come out for that. The other factor is a lot of times our volunteers will say, okay, we're doing this on Saturday. I am making these plans on Sunday. Um, so what the feedback has been from volunteers over through the whole process is let's just do it the next weekend. Um, but we can't keep pushing it, pushing it, pushing it, pushing it, or it'll bump into another event. So we, we can cancel the porta potties. Um, and that's kind of the fifth bullet point, is it? Hmm, towards the bottom, second from the bottom, determination of whether cancellations will be made based on notification of vendors for refunds or cancellations without extra charge. Now, I did add to this today, based on the comments our events coordinator, that Marlboro Day, you know, because we're renting so many things and some of them, you know, your cancellation is like two weeks out, that there we wouldn't necessarily be able to do that for Marlboro Day. But for most other events, we should be able to do that. And I can tell you have to cancel porta potties on Wednesday. I've learned this over years, so. Um.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Um. One, uh, is the, okay, one is can we do a survey to see what type of things the um that uh the community wants to see, you know, for like Christmas? Can we do some type of poll? Is that possible? To see what they would like to um, you know, see if they want, see what type of things they would like to see or, you know, do with their children um as a community coming together with the town. And another question I have is um, how does the events committee, are they, they're not gonna be a part of the planning for the Christmas um proposed event?
So this was the other thing we kind of talked about today, which was like certain events are huge and the town really plans them. Um, so for example, Marlboro Day, the tree lighting and trunk or treat. Like the events committee executes them and does a lot for them, but the town really plans the actual road closures, flow of event, all that kind of thing. So we talked about moving those into this events that are accepted from this process because then the town, it's on the town to make sure everything is organized. So we can put that Christmas in there. Um, I will say unless the events committee gets more volunteers, first Thursday of the month at seven o'clock, guys. Uh, um, they probably will not be able to put on multiple events in December. So we need other volunteers for that.
All right. Um, the question is, um, you said before that the commissioners are allowed to participate with um the different committees. With the different committees, um, do, um, but, but when we're on those meetings, we don't have a say, do we? Can we assist or, or we're just on there listening, basically?
So we're supposed to be on there listening, but also like making sure all the steps are being followed. However, with events, what's been happening because we didn't have an events coordinator is that I've been functioning as the town's events coordinator. So I'm going between the committee and the town staff and talking about what road closures we can do and what staffing levels we have and doing all that coordinating. Now, I won't have to do that anymore. And so I will be able to step back. Um, because we should just kind of be there to assist them and there to also make sure they stay in in the, these policies, right? Um, and I will also say to everyone, we are trying to get all the committees um together on Zoom links that Ms. Lucy has control of, and that is on my list of things to do this week. Because right now we have committees meeting with their own Zoom links and we don't have access to them to give commissioners access to the meetings, and that's a problem that has to be fixed. So then any commissioner could go, but if there's three of us on the meeting, we really can't talk. So. So I am trying to step back from the committees relying on that. Yeah.
Thank you. Well, maybe we could actually um plan some things around what already exists, like for the tree lighting and stuff like that. But I'll talk to you offline about that.
Yeah, they did have kind of some things they wanted. Um. My family is bringing anything. Thank you, guys. Um, that they wanted to expand for next year. So um.
I'll be interested in.
We can talk and like I can communicate it or you can come to the meeting and communicate.
I would like to come to the meeting so I could hear what they, what, what they would like to do and see if we can kind of merge some things together.
Yeah. So I would go to the June meeting because the May meeting is gonna be full.
No Marlboro Day. Right, just let me know, Sarah. Uh, you know, let me know.
Lucy should have that one and the green team one should both be on your outlook calendar. Let me know if they're not because those two have public links.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Do we have any other questions? Okay. So since there's not other questions or changes, I'm going to have the changes that Raina, the events coordinator, and I made today based on her feedback and get those sent out with the packet for the twenty-sixth. And then we can go back and hopefully come up, get this policy in place before we start having events. And, you know, have to make those calls about rain, et cetera. There is one other topic related to events that's gonna push us into the budget. So I'm just gonna mention it now and we'll talk about it again in the budget, but that's vendor fees. So our vendor fees are set by ordinance and they were set the first year we brought back Marlboro Day, which means that we didn't know what was gonna happen. So we set them pretty low. So they're fifty dollars. Um, but I think that vendors would pay more and that would help us fund these events. So when we get over to the budget, I think we should discuss a different rate and update that resolution. Okay. If there's no other questions, um I will take public comment on this because it is a town policy. So just raise your hand if you have a comment in public. All right. We will move on to item three on the agenda, which is continuity of government planning. Um, and this was kind of, I wanted to start this conversation. Kyle, do you kind of want to explain what continuity of government planning is? Because, you know, I'll.
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, government planning, um, is something we really hadn't thought of for a while until uh we had, we were down like one elected official. Um, I guess it's kind of always been on our brains. The continuity of government is ensuring that the government will continue operations, even if we take some severe blows and hits such as the mayor not being able to uh, to be in place anymore or something happens to that position where um part of our government gets hit or something like that. So that's the big thing is ensuring that there's an automatic chain of command that kind of comes into place. Um, so one of the big things for continuity government that we address already is going from three to five commissioners. Um, because we were in the very unique predicament of only having one elected official. Um, one of the many times we've, I think, been a case study over the past couple of years on government operations, um, going down to one elected officials is pretty crazy. Um, you don't have a quorum or nothing. So going up to five ensures that we have to lose three commissioners where if that's happening, it's, there's a bigger issue already. Um, so that's already a big piece of the continuity of government, um, moving forward that we've kind of addressed. The second biggest one will be the continuity of the office of the mayor or president. Um, a lot of places when you do go to five commissioners, they have like a vice mayor, mayor pro tem or someone like that. They have some sort of secondary position or in some places uh where they, where the mayor runs separate from the council and the council has a president of the council um or chair of the council, that person automatically steps into the office of mayor if anything happens. Um, so that's something the board should consider for charter um amendment would be, is there a second in command, a secondary person who does really may not have a whole lot of duties? Um, unless the mayor does have to step down, then they will be stepping up into that mayor role off the bat and there's little downtime. Um, right now, what would have to happen is the commissioners would have to call a special meeting or just a meeting, a regular meeting and elect a new president, which could take a week or two, which can cause some confusions and stuff like that. So just having someone really available to step right into place, um, would go a long way with government.
I didn't realize how many little thing decisions I would need to make or things I would need to sign. Should I be out of town? Should something happen to me? It makes me anxious. So.
Yeah, like emergency orders, emergency declarations, stuff that the mayor can do for thirty days up until um the board or the, the governing body has to ratify to continue those types of things who could uh it could get to start interesting if we don't have a president in place pretty quickly. Um, so that's one of the items that I think we've been talking about for a while. Um, is adding some sort of vice mayor, how that person's chosen or how the, how the mayor's chosen as well. Um. And then just going through some other continuity. I mean, we've shifted a lot of stuff technology-wise, shifting off the elected officials, but on to the uh onto like the staff and day-to-day operations. Um, we've added like for our public works department, we uh now have a foreman in place. So we have a second command for the uh public works. Um, so Mr. Bonds out, it automatically goes to uh, now it's Brandon Gibson's our foreman. Um, he's proven himself in that leadership role. Um, so we bumped him up to form and he's got some more supervisory and field experience now. Um, so just looking in our departments, making sure if the department head is not there, who's able to step right in. So I think the next department we have to look like at is general government. Um, and once we get the new bookkeeper, who we'll talk about, I think that's when we can start figuring out who's gonna take on those kind of secondary responsibilities, just in case.
Yes.
But I missed anything.
Someone said the other day, uh, call it the in case I win the Lotto file, instead of that other name I was calling. Um, so that, that's basically what this is. Not me personally. I'm not leaving. All right. So if you guys have questions or comments, I just wanted to bring that up. So you're starting to think about it as we move into the structure of government and then the public also is thinking about, you know, again, kind of what, what they want to see with that. So um, public, go ahead and raise your hand if you have comments, commissioners, do you have questions? Okay. We do not have anyone raised hands, so we will move on to our budget. Kyle, can you lead us in?
Yep. Um, so this is draft two and John's pulling up the spreadsheet. So this is draft two of the uh town's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three that'll start here in uh July first. Um, so you guys saw the first draft. This is the second draft. And so it's still not a balanced budget. We've kind of added things or moved some things around, which I'll highlight here in a moment. Um. Are you able to zoom in onto that left page there?
And so we've brought it up in Excel so that we can literally have the conversation right now and make changes because this document is changing probably daily right now as we try to bring it into balance.
Yeah, and the board's going in a closed session um this evening to look at uh salaries.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I can read it. Um, so there's not a whole lot of updates to the revenues. Um. One thing I want to address for the revenues is uh our utility taxes or public utility taxes are uh taking a bit of a hit while we are stepping up the tax rate of the assessed value from HEPCO uh has gone down. They've identified equipment that they thought was in town that is not in town. Um, so we've actually seen that rate and taxable base take about a twenty million dollar hit. Um, which equates to probably like a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars in revenue um loss that we were counting on. Um. One thing that in talking to the accounting firm that they mentioned that we could do is uh kind of step up our plan for the U public utility tax rate. Instead of going only a quarter, maybe going up um the fifty cents and pretty much skipping a year to help mitigate some of that issues. And going up to uh two dollars for a hundred dollars assessed value for the utility cost. They said that can make up uh some of the difference. So that's just something to think about. And looking forward if we're, if we need to tap into more revenue source, that could be an option. But we wouldn't, he didn't recommend touching any of the other taxes or altering the tax base at this time. Um. I think that's pretty much it for revenues that we haven't covered. Uh, we're just pretty much looking as revenues come in over the next couple of months, especially income tax, um, and see where. Um, and see where that lands, uh, year to date later on, we'll be able to nail down that number hopefully by, uh. Early to mid-May so that we can provide some final estimates on that moving forward. So you can scroll down to.
Yeah, and I've learned that revenues numbers kind of change as you, as more revenue comes in, you suddenly get a better estimate. And that write-up on revenues that I did will be finalized and will actually be part of the budget. So everyone can understand how they were estimated.
So yeah, coming over to general government and staff salaries, there's a, there's an increase you can see it actually kind of. It goes down a bit. We've eliminated the position of the director of finance and we've replaced it with a bookkeeper at about thirty thousand dollars savings. Um, some of those savings will be eaten up and going into the accounting firm and each HR firm to make up some of those revenues. But I still anticipate there to be about ten thousand dollar profit. Uh, to say from eliminating that position, um. And then also we're just finalizing what the dues of bookkeeper will be, which we'll be talking about later. And then how does the accounting firms fee go up and down? Part of that other increase in general government staff salaries is the addition of the events coordinator, um, at thirty thousand a year. Half of that salary is funded through the, uh, ARPA funds. And actually, when we look closer our year to date, uh, expenditures, we did hire the events quarter coordinator a bit higher in the year this year. So a bit later in the year this year, so we're not going to spend all the money, the ARPA money budgeted for that position this year. And that could get shifted over to next year and help offset. So we may only be spending about ten thousand on that part-time position, which is great. And then the other addition is the addition of the circuit rider, which is, uh, permanent eighty-five percent grant funded. Um, so that's, you see that big increase in salaries, but a lot of that is, is covered through grants. Um, and like I said, just going through the, uh, the firms, there's a couple we're looking, especially, uh, the accounting and the, uh. Human resources firm, just nailing down those numbers, we may see those go up or down a little bit. Um, also what we did in this budget is we've actually shifted some of those professional services into the public safety budget. Um, or a percentage of them, because as we discussed, um, our state grants are based off the amount of money we spend for public safety. They don't look at the entire budget. They just want to see what we're spending on public safety. So general government is heavy in a lot of the expend, the, the catch-all expenses. So used to have a lot of the healthcare. It's got a lot of the firms that do a lot of the work for public safety. So really the HR firm, thirty, they're thirty-three percent of their workforce is in, uh, public safeties who the employees are servicing. So shifting some of those costs over to public safety to, uh, more adequately represent the, uh, the spending that we do on the public safety department. Um, we've also added some funding in for, uh, future annexation surveys. And we've shifted the roadway engineering firm to the CIP budget, um, and the planning and economic development firm is in there as well, the thirty thousand that's ARPA funded. Going down through.
I'm going to sneak in here and just say, um, once we have kind of a balanced budget worked out, we. And all that, we'll start to look at all these services and see who's been two years without their contract revisited and revisit them all. We just don't want to bite off more than we can chew at one time. Go ahead, Kyle.
Yep, on the front, um, operating, uh, not too much changing there. Um, the addition of the dues line item at fifteen hundred, um, software programs, we kind of shifted some money around. So that's a ten thousand dollars, um, and that's including, uh, potentially incorporating a new business licensing program, um. To more, um, effectively utilize that program. Right now it's kind of a broken up, they fill out an online form, then they have to go somewhere else to pay it. And then we have to kind of run all over to track and have a separate spreadsheet, tracking everything versus having a system where each business has a profile. And people would just go in automatically renew, pay and download their certificate, um, and we can run, um, programs a lot more efficiently, quickly. So that's something we're looking into. If that has to get cut, that's about four thousand a year that may or may not get cut. But you can keep going down. Then we have our town committees and events. So there is a change here. The addition of the tree lighting, we've broken that out into a separate event, uh, winter holiday tree lighting. You can see that's been broken out with all the other town major holidays.
I think the tree lighting is still. I, so I think the tree lighting is still under, hmm, no, it's not.
It's winter holiday. It's a separate line.
Yeah, I thought I had upped that as well for some of Commissioner Lot's thoughts, but I'm not sure where that went.
Um, and then some, uh, once we get down to the public works and the CIP, you'll see some more of the decorating for that event. So that is not the decorations for the, that's actually putting on the event, um, and stuff like that. When we get back down, you'll see some, the funding for the decorating. Um, moving into public safety, no, uh, huge changes. Like I said, we're going to look at salaries, um. But you can see where we shifted some of those expenses out of general government or percentage of those government expenses into public safety where they should be. Um, you can see we did, we did it either by, um, percentage of the building they use or the amount of staff that they have. So that's kind of how we've calculated this out. So nothing big there. You can scroll down the public works. Any questions so far from any commissioners? I'm sorry. I know I'm going kind of quick, but. Um, move shifting over to public works, um, staff salaries, like I said, we're talking about no new hires proposed right now. Um, down in maintenance and beautification, um, so you'll see it. In FY twenty twenty-two, it was ten thousand, but however, in draft one of this budget, which we talked about last week, there was twenty thousand in maintenance and beautification. Um, and part of that was, um. For use of some benches and, um, just general streetscape downtown. However, we are going to be speaking with the county council about tapping into that hundred thousand dollar streetscape grant that they have budgeted. And the county has rebudgeted in their current FY twenty-three draft budget. So we're shifting some of that ten thousand dollar expense instead of going to that, um, beautification of benches and planners and stuff. We've shifted into holiday decor in the CIP budget, um, because we're, it's like a one-time purchase of ten thousand dollars. Pretty much anything over ten thousand dollars that we purchased, we put in the CIP budget. Um, so that's why you'll see it's got a little thing reduced by ten grand, but shifted ten grand to the CIP. So you'll see a new line in the CIP and then a mosquito control has gone up very slightly. And then I also want to highlight the, uh, the increase in the residential trash collection. This came up, uh, about six months ago. I think I covered it last week, how the, the county tipping rates gone up to our contract request to charge us a bit more. Um, so we're just kneeling down that number. We'll, that'll actually go into effect in May. Um, because the county pushed it back because they kind of sprung it on everyone, all the municipalities in October and everyone's like, our budget cycle. It's not till July. You can't just increase these costs, even for us, even though it's just like a couple of thousand. If you go to bigger spaces like Laurel, Bowie, it's millions, um, that they had to accommodate for, so. Um, and coming down here, so we're coming out of, uh, public works into the transfers, operating expenses and RVs. So transfer to the CIP fund. So this is the operational funds left over that are going over into the capital improvement project. Right now it's a three forty-three, um, and you'll see the wish list that we have in the CIP budget. Like I said, this budget is not balanced. We're going to have to probably trim that number back to around a hundred and thirty thousand. So, uh. Just to be realist, because as you can see right now, we're running a deficit of, uh, four hundred thousand. So we're looking at trim that transfer to the CIP, which means we'll have to cut or postpone some projects in the CIP. Unless of course, red light speed camera starts because right now that's budget built on zero red light speed camera. So obviously if that kicks in, then we can shift some stuff around. Or if some other things open up as well, but any, any questions on the operational budget so far?
I'm just going to kind of take a minute to, I should have probably done this, explain why I asked to bring an unbalanced budget before y'all. Because technically it's like the mayor's budget. So I could just write a budget and put it in front of everyone. But I don't really personally feel like that helps everyone understand what's happening and how things are funded. So I guess maybe my structure of government opinion is that the commission should be part of. Figuring this budget out. And so I am, that's, that's why we're doing it this way. If you guys hate this and want me to bring you a balanced budget, you can tell me that and I will do that. Um, go ahead, Kyle.
Oh, sure. So we can go over to, uh, CIP. All right, um, so looking up at the, uh, the income revenues for CIP. So this is all the grants and stuff that's coming in, um, a couple of changes is the addition of that county DPW and T streetscape grant for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so pretty much what the next step for that is, um, the town has to submit because it's for beautifications along Main Street. And I'll forward, I'm working right now on, uh. The county budget, I went through the county budget and pulled out projects in the upper Marlboro area, including funding coming to us such as this one. Um, and I'm going to be sending a brief out to the board and possibly have it included in the packet for the, um, town meeting. But it has the details on the hundred thousand, what's for streetscape and, uh, decorations and stuff pretty much to, to make downtown a bit more attractive. So we're actually going to fully implement, to implement that in the FY twenty-three, um, budget. And so you see that listed as an income and then an expense on the other side. I think that's the only big change in the revenues. Um, now expenses, I'm going to touch on the playground. Um, I'm working with the playground vendor. There's some, uh. Not miscommunication, um. The splash pad's going to cost about forty to fifty thousand dollars more, um, than anticipated. Um, but we're working with them. I think it will only have a hit of around ten grand, um, for that. There was just some confusion, not confusion on the, on the, we swapped, uh, salespeople and some quotes got, um. Not updated completely when we increased the size of the splash pad. So, uh, they're working to see how they can trim that down and work with the vendors and stuff like that. So I'm just probably going to ask the board to maybe put an additional ten thousand dollar into that seven twenty to bring up to seven hundred and thirty thousand. Um, if we can balance the budget, if not, but that's, that's a conversation I'm having with them for the next couple of weeks. I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. Like if you scroll down a bit, John, so obviously we're going to have to make some cuts into the CIP. Um, a couple of line items to bring that down because we want to, uh, to transfer less or. Yeah, we're going to be, we're going to have to cut that down. Um, and that'll be a discussion. We have some with some apartment heads, um, but we did want to highlight the winter holiday decor ten thousand. So that was transferred from operating and, uh, brought over into the CIP. For the holiday Christmas lights and trees and stuff like that downtown. So if we, um, set some money aside every year, a bit by bit, we'll pretty much build up our, our holiday decorating.
And I think our treasurer is, we're, oh, you're here, Janice. Uh, is she, a commissioner Duckett is working with public works to get a like better number, but we put this in as a placeholder.
But yeah, so I know we're probably have some discussion with department heads, all looking at some stuff like, for instance, the, uh. The Ford six fifty that we were supposed to buy in FY twenty twenty-two still has not been assigned a bin number. So we may have to, uh, repurpose that line item, um. Or something like that. And there's other places where we can look and see and, and, and make some cuts, um. Or just put and push to the, not cut them, but delay their funding to FY twenty twenty-four. But any questions on the, the CIP?
Do you have another budget to go to or should we start talking?
Uh, it's really just, uh, the cameras, no, no changes to the cameras and then the, the paycheck.
Okay, and then we'll start.
But we can pull up the camera budget, no, no big changes. We've, uh, the only thing we've really changed is we've condensed the. All the line items to one, uh, vehicle lease payoff, um, I think a draft one, we had each of the, the lease agreements, the three we had broken out individually. But we just collapsed them into one line item.
Don't take this.
As well as the police trailer rental and installs in there. So it's the stuff that will get funded if and only if speed cameras are up. And they make a profit over the cost of eighty thousand a year that takes to run the two cameras, one seven twenty-five and one on the crane highway. Um, and I think we're still working with chief to, uh, finalize what the shred lights, be camera budget looks like based off what of some other municipalities do.
So, uh, before we go over to the page here, I'm just going to ask the commissioners. I'm not asking you to balance the budget with me tonight, but a budget is a plan. It's a list of priorities. It's a list of what's important. And I don't. I don't feel one person should make those decisions when all five of us were elected by the public. So I would like to hear from you guys as to what your thoughts are in certain line items. As you have them in public, we will take public comments. Um, and just so you know, questions we usually write down and get back so we can have a full answer for you. All right, go ahead, commissioners.
Um, a, a, a level setting question for me, and maybe this is in here somewhere. Do, uh, do we have any funds from this year that we're anticipating carrying over into next year? Because I'm looking at things and, and Kyle, I think you kind of mentioned, there are a couple of things that look like they slipped from. Uh, this year to next, like some of the, uh, vehicle lease costs. And I don't know if we did any facade improvement for fifty thousand this year, but. Where we are in the budget cycle or where we are in the fiscal year right now, do we anticipate any funding from FY twenty-two? Rolling over and being, uh, you know, hitting our revenue, well, revenue quote unquote bucket for FY twenty-three.
Yeah. That's a good question. So right now we're, uh, the big thing I'm working with the accounting firm is going through the line items. And how the previous director of finance kind of categorized some stuff, um, wasn't completely accurate. So we're trying to make sure they get put in the right line items, um. And, uh, make sure we had some like outstanding personal property taxes and stuff like that that we're working through to get, to get paid, um. So we should know, we're going to do a budget adjustment at the end of the year, um, and we'll know.
Okay.
Carryover. So the ARPA funds are pretty easy to carry right over. Um, any leftover operational money technically just goes into our reserve fund, which we could pull from to fund. Um, if that makes, so in the, uh, if you go back to operating, um, at the bottom of operating there, John. So any surplus money pretty much just goes back to the banks. And then that would come out of that transfer. No, we don't have a transfer from reserves. Unless it's further in income, but we transfer that out of the reserves to fund.
Okay.
So that is an option.
And then I guess the, the, the flip side of that is, is there, uh, any potential that we are overrunning anything this year?
Um, there may be some categories, um, but like I said, for like hiring.
Overall.
Yeah, overall, yeah, I think we're pretty evened out overall, um, to tell you the truth, we're going to come in pretty on budget. Some stuff's gone over, some stuff's gone under, like we didn't feel some of the public work, works vacancies or police vacancies up until like now. We're finally getting fully staffed and then general government, we made a, a cut that we're probably not going to fill till March. So that's probably like fifteen thousand there, um.
May.
The county may never bill us for fuel and maintenance, which would be about a thirty thousand dollar cost savings. That's an accounting thing on their part. They're not sending out any invoices. So I think we'll, we'll come out pretty balanced, uh, this fiscal years. Let's looking possibly some over possibly a little bit on. Over possibly a little under, but we should know a better amount here at the next, as definitely as they're finishing up the April treasures report for two weeks from now.
Okay.
Sorry, I just want to say when we look at our reserve, the thing we want to make sure is the reserve has, I think they said like three months of operating expenses is best practice. So if it has more than that, we're maybe not in good practice because we're holding on to people's money when it could be benefiting them. So we will do that calculation too.
And then.
Threw you off, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. The, the, the other question that I, uh. Uh, I, I, I don't see it on my camera, but I'm sure Darnell's going to give me a side eye, but I'm going to ask the question. Uh, about the, the facility lease. I think you mentioned, um, that there, we're looking at getting a better number for that. I mean, I know spaces come up and then they disappear. That's just how real estate is working right now anyway. Uh, and I've, and I've been down to, uh, the DPW spot. So, and I know it, it needs to be improved, but I'm just wondering. Um, what kind of the. Estimates or kinds of spaces that we're looking at to, to fill in that number, if that, if my question is making sense.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say.
Both answer it. You, you go ahead.
Yeah, under CIP, there's a line item for lease, I think a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Um, so if we include it or we include part of it, so if something comes up in the later part of next year, is something we've discussed. Um, but if nothing comes up at all and, and I like, so I think we're doing some accommodations like moving director bond up to town hall to kind of alleviate some of the pressures, but. Um, there's that, yeah, facility.
But what about a mobile unit?
So the cost, just I want to answer the question about the cost estimate. So the cost, just I want to answer the question about the cost estimate is that Director Bond has seen. Probably four different facilities go in the last two years, and so that's. Him knowing what the rent was on all of those and kind of averaging it in his head. And then multiplying it by twelve. So what we talked about was. Possibly what we can do is kind of. Contingency fund two months like so you can. We can say, okay, here's two months worth, but you can't enter into a lease unless we have more revenue coming in. Then we're anticipating, and so that'd be contingent upon probably me. To ensure, because like of how that lease needs to be executed. So it has to be written kind of carefully, basically, but those four properties, if he had had some funding, he could have. Gotten one. So that's why we want to start having that conversation. And Commissioner Hanson, you asked about mobile facilities and just because. It's not necessarily just the fact that those guys are packed in there like sardines, which is super uncomfortable in a hundred degree weather. It's also that their vehicles only have so much space, like we had a salt spreader that we had to repair. Like replace and repair because it couldn't fit in the bays and stay out of the weather. So we don't have this sometimes. If they put a plow on their truck, they can't turn around in the lot.
Forgot they needed a garage bag.
We can put Kyle in a trailer.
Bert, you know, I'm not, I'm not picking on you. It's it's just, you know, the one of the largest line items there, so I gotta, I gotta poke at it a little bit.
And and not not a problem. And just to let you know that, yeah, as mayor stated, that is an average of. Pretty much the numbers that I've seen, but that actual figure is based off of not mistaken, eleven thousand dollars a month. Basically, what I'm what I'm seeing is the average from things I've seen go.
So we could try, you know, for starters, cutting it down to twenty two, see how that impacts the budget. Whether we're making other changes. Or, you know, whether we just can't afford to fund it and it's something that kind of gets put as. What I was kind of hoping we could do with the capital improvements, we can't fund right now. Is call them a fiscal year twenty twenty four. Capital improvement, because then we know what they are and they're in the budget. So if some annexations come through and some, you know, the revenues are coming in higher. Then mid-year, we can say, wow, we have a surplus, wonderful. Here's the things we wanted to fund but couldn't. And that will make it easy on us to do that adjustment. So that's another part of why there's so much stuff in here. Any other commissioners have thoughts, questions? Places they want to see priority, places they think we can cut, etc. You guys can always email me to or call me or whatever it is. I just, I will tell you, I didn't fully understand all of this stuff before, and so I want to make sure you guys understand it. Alright, let's hear what the public has to say about what's important to them and what their questions are. So that we can make sure that this year's budget document really. Answers everything for them.
There we have Darrell and Struthers.
Hi, everyone. Long time no see. My only question I had with what I noticed through the quick scroll through was the printer budget. It like doubled from seven K to like fifteen K. So just wondering like, what are we printing?
Oh, the printing budget. Yep. So that. Is pretty much a more accurate printing of the quarterly landing newsletter. And some other printing costs. So that was kind of. It was budget for seventy five hundred, but he was putting it in other. Areas. So that's like a accurate representative costs us.
Does cost us fifteen K.
Yeah, it's not.
Have we considered going like, look, if you need to see this, like, there's a website, there's a. There's a link that goes out. That's an expensive cost, but anyway, that's my only two. I mean, it's a virtual work. Can we send out text messages? Sign up on the text message list and you click the link. I don't know. But it seems like to me that would be cheaper than fifteen K.
Yeah, I think we're actually going to be able to make some cuts to that with some of the invoices that have come in. So it costs like closer to like nine thousand for the. For just the printing part of the landings newsletter, so we may be able to bring that down.
And then I guess for me, like, if you gave me the option, I would. I would just select email or something like that. So then those that need or want paper, they can still get paper, but the rest of us that want to save fifteen thousand. Can select email.
We can probably look into that because so we should probably re check and rebid the contract on the landings, but also right now the way we send it out is. Like by zip code. So it would be a pretty big staff lift to switch, but we can discuss that internally.
It goes out by postal route.
So I've written that down. And we'll all discuss that. As we close, or anyone else have their hand up, John?
Monica Williams has now raised her hand.
Just piggybacking on the printing, I do know that not for the landing, but for other town communication that we receive via mail. The Marlboro Town subdivision, we tend to get two copies. Because of the mailing address versus the street address. So the post office recognizes every address within our subdivision as Marlboro Drive. But the. Actual. Address for the county would be like Marlboro Circle, Marble Grove. So I regularly get like mailers that have marble. Marble Circle and Marlboro Thrive for the same address.
Yeah, we it may save us a lot of money just to cut out zip code. Of course, we have to internalize that.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, anyone else, John?
Nobody else raised their hands.
Alright, so. I will keep working on this then with the comments that Commissioner Colbert shared and the public shared. If you are commissioner and have other comments. Please let me know, because I want to try and have something balanced for us to look at next time. So you may see that I've changed things and you may disagree with that, but like, look at it so that we can have that discussion. Next time. And we will move on. Now to our town of Upper Marlboro Emergency Relief Fund. Which we had. Approved back in probably December or maybe January with the ARPA funds and. Our town clerk was able to put it together. In lieu of our. And so. Shall I have John kind of show us since he put it together, Kyle, or do you want to present it?
Oh, yeah, you can definitely do it.
Excited to launch our town of Marlboro Emergency Relief Fund, of course, fifteen thousand dollars was allotted from ARPA funds. To be allocated to people who might need assistance for mortgage, rental or utility assistance. And one thing that Mayor Franklin has discovered as through working with WSSC. Is there is a high number of people in the town who have unpaid water bills. And so the idea is to have on the town of Upper Marlboro website. An application where you will submit the application. That application, of course, will have, you must provide proof of residency within the town. You also must provide a statement of the hardship that you're experiencing. As well as proof of either a mortgage bill, rental, you know, back rental. Rent and of course bills for utilities, of course, cable. Will not qualify for any type of rental assistance. It only pertains to water. And electric and those essential utilities that are most important. So what will happen is that application process will of course have a closing date. Once all applications are received, there will be a board of people who will meet. That will consist of town staff, Board of Commissioners. And, you know, making sure that we go through, we vet each of those applications to find out who needs the the assistance. And then, of course, decisions will be made. All monies will be paid directly to the mortgage rental or utility company. No money will be given out to any of the residents directly. But award letters will be given to residents that they know that those bills are being paid on their behalf. And the only thing that we need the Board of Commissioners to determine, of course, is the cap as to how much money they want to allocate. For the mortgage rental and utility assistance, so that we know what dollar amount you're wanting to set. Out of that fifteen thousand, so we can try to help the most. The big greater population within the town. And we're excited to launch it. Of course, the graphic that you see here will be the graphic that we use on the website. And in the packet, there was a sample application. On the application, of course, will be made available hard copy as well as online. So that we are able as town staff, we can help people to follow those applications and to spread the word. And there you go.
Yes, thank you, John.
So are, do we have a cutoff amount that? A family could possibly get like, you know, up to five hundred dollars per family, up to a thousand dollars. Do we have a cutoff amount?
So like in addition to a rental cap, a mortgage cap and a utility cap, just a total household cap? Yeah, we don't. I just, I just wrote that on my thing right now so we can establish it and then add to the chart.
Don't need to see how many people apply first.
I think we need to let them know how much. It just kind of to summarize for everyone, there are eighty six. Housing units in the town. That are behind on their water bill and in danger of being shut off. So that's about twenty five percent of our total housing units. And I'll, I mean, I'll discount that to say maybe like. Eighteen to twenty percent of our residents who live in house, live in the housing units, because not all of them are occupied. And I'm guessing some of those, there's a higher percentage of unoccupied housing units with. The unpaid water bills than occupied.
Into support the ones that are unoccupied, no, right? Would if? What if the person, the owner, the homeowner is actually renting out that the home? To someone else and is behind on their bill, because you know how sometimes people put. Bills in another person's name, so they can keep it on, keep services on hot. How do, how do we? Bet this out?
John, did you run into that? Because so John's run one of these programs before he was.
We did, and we actually allowed the the mortgage holder to apply for that type of assistance. Because of course, you know, we want to make sure that we try to help. You know, there's a is a problem with them making the mortgage payment. We also don't want to see a renter who might be in their home. Be evicted, because that, you know, it's a double whammy time, you know. So the good thing is, is that, you know, making this available to and establishing the criteria, making sure that they are a town of a marble resident. Is the most important piece of this puzzle.
Right, so the the really the mortgage holder, if they didn't live in the town. Would not be able to, if they.
Qualify, that is correct.
So if they lived in New York and rented out their house, the mortgage holder couldn't. Get the assistance. But and we make this decision, so if that doesn't.
Could the renter get the assistance?
Right, well, we have to have a thing so that the both aren't getting the assistance, which is the per household thing. The per household has to apply to the housing unit, per housing unit. That's what we call it instead of per household.
So once, because because Commissioner Hatch has said that. We shouldn't set up a boundary, but I think that we should, and if there's money left over, then. You know, you can open it back up again, but if everybody has. If it's a cutoff point, if it's a cutoff amount, then it's it's fair. And then if it's money left over, I mean, perhaps we could help some other people.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, because if we put twice into one housing unit, that's another. Potential person we aren't helping.
Do we have? Data on, you know, the average amount households are behind, but probably not on rental and mortgage, but I know I was with you on the WSSC call. Do we have that data on?
Yeah, the the water bills was five hundred and sixty seven dollars average. Yes. We don't have the money to do that. But I will say the other thing I had kind of thought, but isn't actually in here is so WSSC has a program. Or you can sign up to just make payments every month on that bill. So that you pay it over twenty four to thirty six months. So we could. Give assistance and like, maybe you get. An extra fifty dollars or something if you successfully, well, that's too much, but if you go for six months of successful completion on. That, do you see what I'm saying? To kind of incentivize people to sign up for those payment programs.
Also, let me just say this, the Salvation Army does have a program. If you take your bill. Because I've actually helped someone do this before. If you take your bill. They took their water bill down to the Salvation Army and. They had a letter showing that they got a letter from the Salvation Army saying that they will pay the bill and they paid it directly. But I think their bill was like, it was over five hundred dollars, and I think their cap was five hundred for the Salvation Army.
But that could really help my family.
Help my friend out. I mean, I found the resource by calling. I called the water, water, water company and I spoke to a representative and they gave me the information to pass along. So the person actually had to physically go there with ID. With with proof of residency and the bill, and then they actually gave them a letter. That let them know that they will pay it and how much and the cap was five hundred. And so they paid directly to the water company and, you know.
Yeah, so I have this from, I can't get it close enough. I have at the town hall, there's a bunch of these these forms. There you'll see them, they're blue and green. They're from WSSC. They do not have the Salvation Army program, but they gave us information about that program. So kind of a. An additional project to this is that I want to get those resources all in one place. Right? So when you come to us for help, we're not just giving you whatever help we have, but we're helping you access. The other. Assistance, right? So Salvation Army, if Pepco has a payment plan, WS, I'm talking to someone at. At Pepco to try and figure that out. WSSC's payment plans. Certain people will be able to apply for bill adjustments, that kind of thing. So when we go through, even probably the people we don't approve. Will be offering them assistance, technical assistance. With getting into the programs, the way you helped your friend, but you can come to the town for the help. Not everyone has a care and friend.
They they not only helped with water, they did mortgage and Pepco as well, but. I think at that time. Once they exceeded their amount that they paid out, then they, you know, they shut that part, that portion of the program down. So they do have. They do offer those other assistances as well. You know, they shut that part, that, that portion of the program down, so they do have, they do offer those other assistances as well.
And I just want to also say, most, what, most of the time what I've seen is you don't really get more of the mortgage assistance, you get more of the rental assistance and utility. So i- it's few and far between that you get someone that needs mortgage assistance, so just, that's something to keep in mind.
Oh yeah, we need to come up with caps, John's refocusing us nicely.
So I have a question, um, John, when you said, I mean, the man said you did this program before, to kind of help. Stop some of this sort of possible fraud, did you all required like W nines from the landlords? Because that's a way that you can stop them from just collecting money and not paying the actual rent or mortgage. Instead of sending the bill to, or giving the money to the tenant, you give it to the landlord, but you also require them to fill out a W nine. Showing that you actually gave them the money, so that they don't pay it, you're not caught on the hook for saying that you gave money to somebody.
We did, we also, um, we also had them sign a release that said we could speak to the landlords. Like in the mortgage companies, because a lot of times we did just to verify, because of course we have to get the information from them. Um, to verify, you know, what's going on, so that was one of the things we did with the W nine, we also did the um. We had a release that we were able to speak to the, the landlords, because a lot of times we had to get addresses for the landlords. We had to, you know, get the invoices from them, because of course, you know, some of the copies that they gave us, of course, weren't legible, so we had to. Track stuff, some stuff down for them on their behalf. So yeah, I mean, there's ways of, of protecting, that, that's the main thing, is protecting the town and, and, and the money that's being given out.
Okay.
Can I just say also that maybe we should think about partnering with the churches within the town? Uh, the Catholic Church, I know that they offer, they pay, they do pay um, bills for people, the Catholic Church here on um. I guess by the. By the pond, I can't think of the name of the. They do offer assistance and the other church over here. Um, by the seven eleven, forgive me, I can't think of the names, is the same. Trinity, Trinity, yes, they also, they do like maybe up to a hundred dollars in Pepco or um. Um, electric, um, utility bills, I think they pay up to like a hundred dollars. Um, and, you know, but they don't go over that amount, now, Catholic uh church. I know they, they do help out a, um, a large part of the communities, um, and people from other. Areas can also apply.
I didn't know that, so I will. Work on co- connecting with them and figuring out, first of all, John had said we would have a board to review them, so maybe we can get. Some of them to be members of that board, um, but also find out what they're offering and how we can partner.
Yes, I, I know for a fact, because I've actually done my research with the both of them, so I can give you some more information offline.
Okay, good, excellent, thank you. So does anyone have any thoughts on our actual numbers here? I think we have a lot less rental units in town, or at least. Potential, there's probably rental units that are not like official, um. I don't know. Anyone want to throw out a number?
Well, I'll, I'll say my, my original thought was uh, six, six, three rental mortgage utilities, but it's sounding like. Um, to the point that John made earlier, there probably isn't. Or, or historically, it sounds like there wasn't as much um, application for the mortgage assistance, so maybe switching that to. The utility since that average rate is so high, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking that the uh. The average for the water bills would be that high.
So like six, three, six?
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking now, but just throwing it out there, get, get the conversation going.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, because like, three isn't a lot of help to a mortgage. But also.
Seems like we should be focusing on the water bills mostly.
Well, so I've had pointed out to me, um, that also sometimes the water bill is behind. Partly because they bill quarterly. So it's, I mean, I think the water bill is a symptom. Of a bigger problem. Uh, but I do also think that that utility is going to be the easiest place for us to help people. Because if we have rental units, um, that are really just like. Not officially registered rental units, those people are not going to come to us for assistance. And we're going to have more of those than, uh, where John previously ran his pro, ran the program, so. I mean, I, I'm wondering if we should do like four, four, six, or even four, four, five. Like, I mean, see, the, the thing is, if we have. We've, we've got to think about that cap, because say we capped it at a thousand dollars and that's what everyone used, we could only help fifteen. Households.
Yeah, I, I personally, I feel like um, four to five hundred dollars should be the cap. And I think that we shouldn't reach to help people with the mortgage. I think the utilities is more the focus, should be more the focus in my opinion, and if. You know, there is a, 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 a real need. Then we could possibly see if we could, you know, once it's reviewed by the board and whatever the processes are. Um, and then we can make a decision based on, based on, you know, what's going on. If we could actually help with the mortgage.
Yeah.
Because I just think it's going to spend, it's going to get, it's going to deplete the funds pretty quickly if we're, because the mortgage is always going to be a whole lot more money. It's not going to be, you know, four, five, four or five hundred dollars, it's going to be thousands of dollars, so I think, um. That will deplete the funds pretty quickly, in my opinion.
I mean, that's the thing that's been in my head, so yes. So maybe what we do is debut the program as a rental and utility assistance program, close it at a certain time. And then if there are remaining funds, we will consider mortgage assistance. Or maybe not.
I don't even think we should put it out there as mortgage assist, mortgage assistance, I think that. If we're just focusing on uh, the, the utilities. And we know that there is a need because someone had a house fire or something crazy happened, and we could help them in other ways. Then we do that, you know, um, have the emergency funds to help a family in, in, and, you know, dire need. Versus trying to pay somebody's mortgage, I mean, it's like, but, like having a bene- benevolent fund for um. You know, uh, people who, you know, someone who just lost their job and they can't feed their kids and blah, 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 blah. We, you know, they could apply and get some assistance that way, and, and, you know, the money will stretch a little bit further, I, I just think so.
I agree. What does everyone else think about that?
This is Janice, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you, I, I, I can't make a long comment on this, but I totally agree with Karen. At, on this um, topic in terms of the assistance, because um, I think. Going that route and trying to make a president, a precedent, set a precedence that we will be paying someone mortgage. Is probably something that people will start to depend on. And we really want people to at least be able to know that they can come get the, some, some assistance. But I think when we start to reach into the mortgage area, I think we may be setting a precedence for people to feel like. That is a something that they may be able to slip on, and I'm not saying that people are just going to say, well, I'm not going to pay my mortgage. But I think that if we set it. At a place where it's something that is achievable. And still, I think, being able to provide the services that we're talking about, or the assistance that we're talking about. Can, is already offsetting someone's mortgage in a way, offsetting their bills, so that they can pay their mortgage.
That's true.
Yeah, I think we should focus on utilities.
So do we want to just do? Four and six, four and five, four and four? Or do we want to do everything at five hundred and the cap is five hundred, so you can only get one kind of assistance? I don't know.
Oh, and another thing, if we capping it, that we should probably do four or five like we, like, like I stated. But I'm also thinking that, um. They should only be able to apply, you know, get the assistance once, one time, like, you know?
Yes.
Like next year, if we have it available again, we don't want the same people coming back, we want to give it to others.
Like once every five years or something?
If we, you know, if we gave it to you this year, at least, at least a, a year or two where you couldn't, you know, you couldn't qualify again. You know what I mean? We want to make sure that we're spreading the love.
Yes.
And not the same person coming back the next year because they knew we offered the program. You know?
Well, we also don't know how many people are going to apply either, I mean, it could be just a handful of people, or it could be a lot of people.
Yeah.
Well, you know, somebody may try their hand because they know that it's free, right, so. I don't, they don't have nothing to lose.
Yeah, um, I do want to just get for a minute. A- ask Ms., put Ms. Monica Williams on the spot, because she is the president of Marlboro Town HOA, which is. Holds two thirds of our housing units, or maybe two thirds of our population and fifty percent of our housing units. So I just would like to see if she has any comments, concerns, questions that we should think about while we're making this decision, because. Her residents are probably most going to be impacted because there's so many of them. John, can you unmute her, please?
Hello, um, I do agree that the utility help will probably go a little bit further. Um, and I, and I, I could see how there'd be resident, a lot of residents with large water bills, because with WSSC like you're. Um, you have to pay that within probably, I think, what, maybe fifteen to thirty days, once you get your quarterly bill. And then after that, it starts, you get, you start getting late fees, et cetera, um, but I do believe that, um. Utility assist, assistance would actually be more. It, it would help a lot more people than rental assistance, and also, um, to piggyback on the, um, conversation about the, uh, the renters versus the homeowners. Um, we do, you know, we've been trying to work on identifying who's a renter and who is a homeowner, so, um. That, um, we, we tried to create like a data, not a data, database, but a list of, uh, as we come across people that are actually, um, renters. We've been trying to catalog them, um, so that is something that may come up when. You, you have homeowners that are coming, well, residents that are coming in to apply for the assistance, so I just wanted to give you a heads up about that. Um, but I do believe that rental, not rental assistance, but uh, utility assistance is probably a better option right now. It could be spread out a lot more than mortgage assistance.
Thank you for representing your folks.
Yeah, I mean, and, and unfortunately, we don't have a lot of community involvement, so I couldn't honestly give you a ballpark figure of who. Not who, but how many people are possibly affected, we really just don't even know, you'll probably find out before the HOA. Uh, members would, uh, find out, uh, once this gets, uh, released out to the public, uh, we just, you know, I have like no ballpark figure of. Uh, how many residents it could possibly, uh, that this would possibly benefit in, in, in our subdivision. But just based on the number of houses that we have within the town, I would assume the same thing that you did, but that it's going to be. A lot coming from, uh, from our particular, from our subdivision.
Thank you. Can I suggest, guys, that we do four hundred and four hundred with a five hundred dollar cap, which means you could get. A little help with both, right, like, they, they're the cap, right, so we're not necessarily, everyone comes forward with assistance requests. Isn't necessarily going to get four hundred from each category, right?
So four hundred would help thirty seven families.
But, um, I'm thinking that if you get four hundred, it's either or.
Okay.
How can we effectively spread the love if we're? If, if we're double dipping, like, you know, if you get help with your water bill, you don't get help with your Pepco bill as well. Is one of the.
Oh, right, yeah, no, I meant for like rental. But, so if we did four hundred, because Tommy makes a good point, if we did a five hundred dollar cap. If everyone maxed the cap, we could only help thirty families, so we could help seven more families by reducing it to four hundred dollars.
Thirty seven and a half.
Yeah, I said four to five, I, I agree.
Okay. Does anyone object to four hundred? Per item and per household?
Per item against, um, Mayor Franklin, you mean, both, they can get both?
No, I mean, your rental cap is four hun- I mean, basically, instead of having rental cap, utility cap, whatever. Your cap of how much, oh, no, no, your rental cap would be four hundred, your utility cap would be four hundred, and you could only receive one type of assistance.
Per household, yeah.
Per household.
Okay.
So your total cap is capped by the fact you can only receive one type of assistance.
Okay, got it.
So you have a choice of what you want to use it for.
Right, that, that's what I wanted to express, yes, exactly, thank you.
Okay, so that's some guidance, um, let's take public comment. Does anyone got a hand up, John?
Yes, I have Darylin's feathers free.
Okay.
Hi, I could, you, I muted earlier, but I was like, let me wait, I gotta be patient, anyway.
You gotta follow the rules, yeah.
Um, look, I'm trying, I'm trying, okay, so, um, I like the four hundred idea, but as a person who formerly rented and now has a mortgage. Um, and I know that mortgage or past due bills can be thousands of dollars, however, four hundred dollars is four hundred dollars. And it's four hundred dollars less that I would have to pay on whatever the bill is, and so I know some people in the room are thinking that it'll go further, but. In terms of like putting it on your mortgage, it's, it's still four hundred dollars less that that person will have to pay if they're past due. Considering they have to show that it's their, that their bill is past due to begin with. So it's not like you're giving it to somebody who is on time or, or whatnot, so that's. That's my feedback on that, and I think the other ones, the four hundred dollar utility and four hundred dollar rental is fine as well, and you still will be helping the same number of people. You just wouldn't be taking care of fully the problem, and you still may not, like, their, if their utility bill is five hundred dollars, they still would have to come out of pocket. A hundred dollars, um, on the, on a five hundred dollar water bill, so. It's just a less amount that they would have to pay, which to me, that's still helping somebody. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Any other hands, John?
None, no, no, Monica's got her hand one more.
Okay. Go ahead, Monica.
Um, um, for the, uh, rent, not rental assistance, but for the utility assistance, maybe. Um, if they meet their cap, they could be helpful, uh, I guess we could supplement the help. By helping them fill out applications for whatever, um, the utility, whatever help the utility company offers. So if they meet the, if they have a utility bill and it's, you know, they've already received the funds from the town. Um, of, maybe the town could assist them with getting additional help from the utility company, kind of push it together.
Yeah, my plan was to help everyone who applies, we will help technically, in the way that you're talking about. Uh, like the town helping them fill out things, if they need help, you know, making phone calls or getting a number to call, or they need. You know, the mayor to say to WSSC, hey, you told me this program. The mayor to say to WSSC, hey, you told me this program worked and my residents are having a problem with it, make it work. We'll do that for everyone, so we can, we can help everyone in some way, and we can financially help a limited number of people.
Okay.
All right, anything else from us, because we'll probably approve this on the twenty sixth, how we have it. And we can always say we want to add something back in or change it on the twenty sixth. All right, then we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the bookkeeper job description.
All right, I can, uh, talk about this one, so as everyone's aware, we're placing the director of finance job with a, uh. Administrative assistant slash bookkeeper, just to do the day-to-day financial data entry and stuff like that. Um, while the town administrator works with the, uh, accounting firm and the, uh. Um, auditing firm, um, to move forward the town's financial day-to-day policies, um, so as you can see here, these are some. Uh, the big thing is the essential functions of what they're going to be doing, um, we already got some feedback from the accounting firm. They said that they don't, there are some things that they don't need to do, like the IRS two ninety nine forms that they could generate, but instead have the bookkeeper do some different data entry stuff. Um, that would take some time off their plate, so I'm working with them and Insurity to finalize this job description, hopefully we can get it. Um, posted by the end of April and someone hired in June, um, for the next, next budget cycle. I can take any questions.
Does anyone have questions or comments on it? We just have to approve all the job descriptions. Uh, if there's no comments, we can take public comment, if there is any. Is there any, John? All right, so that, my script, so that will be the end of the regular agenda. Um, so I'm going to ask if there is a motion to go into closed session. Under general provisions, article three dash three oh five B one, to discuss the appointment, employment. Assignment promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees. Or officials over whom it is the public body, this public body has jurisdiction and any other personnel matter. That affects one or more specific individuals, and this is just your annual discussion of the more details of that salary. Number. So anyone can say so moved, and that will make it a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can we vote in alphabetical order, so John can record it? So Charles, you're first.
Hi.
Janice? She might not be with us, I. Tommy.
Hi.
And Karen.
Hi.
Okay, John, do I need to get an actual abstention from Janice? Or can the motion pass without that?
Yeah, the motion can pass without, you're fine, because you got, you have, you have the quorum, so you're fine.
Okay. Mo, motion passes, and we will say good night to y'all, and, oh, John, John, put this up, thank you. For getting this up here, just reminder for everyone that we've got committees, we definitely love to have volunteers and need to have volunteers on them. Um, so if you're interested in something, we have a committee, contact town hall, and we are working together. Tommy, we'll send you slides. Um, all right, thank you, everyone, and happy Easter. Close session Zoom.
Are we staying here, going to the other one?
Go to the other one.